All right, this is City of Avondale Estates, Georgia, Board of Mayor Commissioners, uh, public hearing in a regular meeting. This December thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, it's five thirty.
Six.
Six. I'd call the meeting forward. We have an agenda before us to have a motion to adopt.
Delude.
That was Brian, do I have a second?
Second.
That's Lisa Oliver, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, and Lyle, okay.
Yep.
All right, first item, uh, this is a public hearing to receive comment on the twenty twenty-four operating budget and twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five capital program. We will not be making comments, we won't necessarily be answering questions, but we're just here to hear from you.
Can you kick it to me first?
Oh, and first, Mr. Manager needs to say a word to.
Yes, uh, um, just wanted to let y'all know that, um, what we have prepared for you tonight, which is, um, the second reading of the budget and the consideration for its adoption are, um, final drafts. Uh, the budget we are asking you to adopt regardless of the position determined, uh, by the board with regard to the SSD is the budget document that has removed the projected SSD revenue from it. And there's a couple of adjustments to that budget. Um, one, well, in addition to the removal of the SSD projection, which if you recall, we had in at three mills or generating approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in revenue, is a revision to the insurance premium revenue line item. As business grows in the community, the premium, the insurance premium that is owed to the city uh, from conducting that business also grows. And our premium has been growing a little faster than we anticipated, so we revised that projection upward. We also, uh, were able to reduce, um, a, 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 a little bit of a salary expenditure and government administration. Uh, so those two additional moves, um, get you to the balanced budget that you have before you. Uh, that balanced budget, um, in, does not include, um, uh, a transfer out to capital, to the capital fund. However, the capital program budget, um, did not, was not adjusted for potential SSD revenue. Uh, so we always assumed that we were comfortable plugging in a transfer of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the capital fund at year end twenty-four. Uh, we still believe with this budget, even though that's not reflected, that that is a, um, a target we'll be able to hit through expenditure savings incurred throughout the year. Uh, so the capital program still includes, um, um, that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar assumed transfer at the end. Uh, the other two items that were adjusted in the capital budget we discussed, uh, one is the fact that the federal government, uh, is, is mandating that, um, all municipalities receiving ARCA funds budget the entirety of those, uh, of those ARCA funds by, uh, the beginning of twenty twenty-five. So, um, we had, we were, we were mandated to go ahead and budget the remaining sixty-five thousand dollars in funds we had, we had projected left in ARCA. Um, those have been placed in the police line item. Um, and then, uh, in addition to that is the inclusion of the downtown master plan. And a caveat to that is that that number is kind of a, uh, a, um, ballpark figure. Uh, and, uh, we have had some preliminary discussions with the DDA, uh, regarding, um, sharing in that expense. Um, so we anticipate that the city's expense for the downtown master plan will actually end up being less than the hundred thousand dollars that we've got plugged in. Uh, but just wanted to bring that to your attention before we held a public hearing and those questions may have been asked.
Patrick, just to clarify, you said that sixty-five has been plugged in in the police item, in the police line, you mean police vehicles under vehicles, right?
Correct, well, we don't, it, it's, it's, yes, it's under vehicles.
Okay.
Um, but, um, that is more of that vehicles and an equipment catch-all. Uh, so that sixty-five thousand there that has been budgeted has not necessarily been, um, uh, has yet to be recommended for appropriation.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. Mm-hmm, okay. So any comments out there? Question? About budget? Right over there? Any other line? Nope. Okay. All right, seeing none, um, gonna close the public hearings. Okay. So that concludes that, uh, item number four, Commissioner comments, uh, Lyle, we'll start with you up there on the screen.
Uh, really, I, I don't have a, yeah, sorry about that, I didn't, was making sure I was unmuted. Uh, no, I, I really don't have anything, uh, except to, you know, wish everybody a happy holiday season, the menorah lighting was nice. And, uh, you know, thank everybody for making it what it was.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Marion?
Uh, I too am very happy to see, I'm so happy to see so many people here tonight, this is fantastic. Um, I, I know we're gonna have a robust discussion later on, uh, but just welcome. And I hope you all have a happy holiday if I don't see you again.
Okay. Commissioner, Commissioner Tull?
Yeah, I'm anticipating not being here for the last meeting of the year, hate to miss, but have a, something planned with my family. Uh, so I too want to wish everyone happy holidays now. I also want to take this opportunity to say to the outgoing commissioners, Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Miriam, how very much I've enjoyed serving on this board with them. It's really been a privilege and an honor and I so appreciate that even when we disagree, we can always maintain contact, talk with one another, understand where the other person is coming from and, and I hold the highest respect for both of them. They have done incredible work on this board, incredible work, when you think where we were. Boy, Brian, you've been here eight years, Dee's been here four, but even five years ago, the work that has been put in here has really yielded results and I know both of them care very deeply about our city and are passionate about the work that they've done and I just want to tell you guys how much I treasure the time with you, thanks, thank you.
Thank you, very nice, thank you. Brian?
Yeah, um, thank you.
Yeah.
I think this is the, the next to last meeting for, for Dee and I. We had some conversations over the weekend and, um, I think we, we walk out of here pretty proud of what we've been able to accomplish. Um, pretty happy about where the city is heading. Uh, none of the decisions are easy. Um, none of them have been taken lightly. Um, in the eight years I've served with three different boards, two different, three different city managers. Um, at no point in time did I feel like any, didn't feel like, didn't want to do what they felt like was in the best interest of Avondale Estates. It's just everyone has different opinions of what's in the best interest every now and then, and so the making of the sausage is not as easy um, as you might think, uh, sometimes, but I do believe with this board specifically, uh, the way that we communicated our ideas, the respect that we've had for one another. Um, too many times, I think in today's political environment, we see too many people looking to get, raise money with clickbait and argue and at the expense of never getting anything done, I think we've done the exact opposite. Um, and so, um, I'm looking forward to the new board, bringing you guys showing up and, and getting involved. Um, you're welcome for the problems we've left, um, I'm sorry. Um, but I'll be a resident at that point in time, um, yes. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, uh, I just breezed back into town, I've been on the road all day, went to pick up my twins at college, they both went to the same college, which is kind of crazy and, uh, I'd say after only one semester of school, the ride home, we actually had a a very intelligent conversation for the first time, maybe never, uh, my son was asking about budgeting and I was, I was telling us, Brian's favorite topic, uh, the backwards nature of government budgeting and my daughter was asking about stormwater and I was like, man, this is awesome. But, uh, yeah, it's, uh, I'm sorry, you're indulging me, but I'm like, awesome, my future is full of not being a snarky, this is great. So, uh, but thank you all for being here, I will stop, I have nothing to add, Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I have a couple of announcements to make tonight. Um, first, there are two remaining events, uh, at the Town Green, uh, this weekend. Uh, Saturday is Last Minute Krampus, uh, which is an artist consignment market, uh, run by Heck House. And though all scheduled photo slots with Krampus and the goats are full, uh, walk-ups will be, uh, fit in as available. Uh, Atlanta Ghostbusters are collecting toys for their toy drive from noon to three and the Black Sheep Ensemble Brass Band will perform at three o'clock. And then on Sunday, uh, the Avondale Estates Farmers Market will have their last market of the year. Um, they will be returning to the Town Green every Sunday in twenty twenty-four after the holidays. Uh, and then one business item to attend to, um, regarding an, uh, an, an item that was on last meeting's agenda. Um, we are currently in the process of working with Georgia Power for, um, alternatives for power at the, um, Town Green Commercial Development Site. And one piece of direction we need from the board is whether the board is willing to, um, appropriate funds associated with, um, locating in a, uh, position not reflected on last week's easement documents. Uh, and if so, how much money would the board be willing to appropriate? Um, that will help Georgia Power understand, uh, what possible alternatives are available to them.
So we don't have a specific site?
No, so, so what I'm saying, correct.
Just wondering how much money.
That's right, so that they know what alternatives to provide. So I, I didn't know if you guys were comfortable spending additional monies on that site or if you were, or how much additional monies that you might be comfortable with so that we can work with them to produce some, some alternate solutions.
So, a- as you know, I've been very concerned about locating the transformer in the proposed location. And I think Shannon is trying to work on some alternatives. Personally, I would be willing to pay, I, I think we've paid a lot for the pavilion and to create plaza area there and I don't want to start breaking it all up with the, uh, transformer's location, but I would, I mean, it would, how much I'd be willing to spend partially depends on what the proposed location is, so I mean, I am willing to spend more, I don't know if that's gonna be pertinent.
What you ought to consider is, is the capital program. Um, we have approximately six hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, um, left to, to allocate out of that fund. Um, a couple of items to note regarding that six forty-two, um, you know, as, as Mayor Pro Tim Fisher always brings up, um, the, the numbers contained within the capital program are never quite accurate because they're numbers that we plug in prior to, um, either engineering or bid, uh, and those numbers usually come in higher. Now, we've been lucky and sometimes they've come in lower, but they usually come in higher, so we will need some of those funds um, in the tank, so to speak, to cover any cost overage. Uh, so I would caution against, um, you know, using the, the bulk of those funds, correct?
On the two seventy-eight, we're supposed to open bids this week? Always, will, will, will we have a true cost of what that's going to be in the city's eventual portion of it?
So, yes, um, we, those, the, those bids were open today. We do not, we're not ready to discuss that in any depth uh, because the, the process is now in the hands of our engineering firm, who was the designer of the project Stantec, to tabulate those bid documents, um, for an apples-to-apples comparison uh, so that we can understand, A, uh, if the bidder is responsible and B, and, and met all the requirements and B, whether or not, uh, we're looking at, you know, the, the, the same bid. Um, we are, we are going to have a meeting to discuss those tabulations on Friday. Uh, so after Friday, we will have a, uh, a recommendation to the board as to whether to award a contract or to reject the bids and start over, but you know, I don't know that yet. Um, there's a couple of other issues at play, um, which is what role, what additional role in, in helping us to fund that project ARC is willing to take on? Uh, they had indicated to us that they were willing to, uh, provide additional funding for the project, but if y'all recall, ARC had asked us to bid the project and get those bids back before they committed to do a certain level of funding so they could know what, whatever, yeah, what the deficit might be. So that's all coming, but dang, but any other detail? You know, I can't, yeah, you know.
Again, one more point is, um, I think we spent too much time and too much resources and it's too much of a congregation area for the community to have poorly placed transformer sitting in the middle of it. Um, so that would lead me to say, um, I, I think I'd be willing in my capacity over the next three weeks, uh, to um, explore what potential it would cost, what, what, what's available to us. Um, but I think that you, we couldn't commit to anything until we knew exactly what, what works for, because two seventy-eight is the next, that's the.
They didn't want to commit to doing any legwork in us, they knew that y'all were willing to spend additional funds.
Yeah, yeah, but is that, you know, what I don't know, is that fifty thousand, is that twenty thousand, is it six hundred thousand? Now, that's the part that, I guess, you know.
I'd say, I'd say, if you just, just, and this is, this is, this is ballparking, fifty to a hundred and fifty.
Fifty to a hundred.
Yeah.
And that's helpful, that's what I was gonna ask, is there even any, okay?
That we would, I just think again, that transformer sitting in front of that Trail of the Grand Project makes me crazy every day when I drive by it, made it, can't believe it was put there. Um, I, I, I would, it would bother me if it was poorly placed. On, on the, on this.
I mean, I, I don't think the transformer was in quite as an obvious spot what we saw in the movie. It wasn't as outrageous, I mean, for me, I would, I would be okay toward the lower number if it wasn't like everyone has said, if it was an acceptable spot, but I, I, yeah, I don't, I am, I am nervous about the funds and where we're going, so.
Patrick, I, I think, uh, you know, we should, uh, be able to see options on placement and cost to place it wherever they are. Um, you know, bring us the best three and let's compare the cost, that would make more sense.
I don't even know if we'll have three options. I think they were just want, wanting to know that y'all be willing to spend the money it would take to, to do this. Yeah.
Do we need, so that, right now?
Okay.
Direction.
Assuming just from this, this discussion that y'all would be amenable to directing some funds at a reasonable level to ensure proper placement of power.
Some dollars and that we don't commit to anything, I mean, that's only if we see.
I think Patrick and Shannon can have an idea of what the amounts would be comfortable in, what placements would be, you know, one that would be acceptable. And so I, I trust you guys with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Honestly.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you can, if you could slim down that range a little bit, fifty to one fifty is what you said, I think. You know, if we could get it.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
Yeah, if we could get it to, you know, maybe, uh, fifty thousand each way, then, you know, that would be a better, uh, range for me anyway.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, so, Mr. Commissioner comments? Okay. What we gonna do in the minutes, because I wanted to look at those before we approved them?
Yes, uh, those were not included in the attachment, so I will include those for the following meeting.
Okay, and I probably should have taken that off up front, let me do anything.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're gonna skip item five for now, uh, it's just approval meeting minutes, it's not a big deal. All right, item number six, um, hold on one second. Listen to this. Listen to it. Yep, no.
There you go.
Sorry, you for read the exact.
I think that's it.
Is that it?
No.
Oh, sorry, gave you the wrong one.
Not yet.
Oh, for sure. I was going to hear someone.
Okay. All right. So we have a force, uh, an ordinance to adopt the twenty twenty-four operating budget and twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five capital program, second read. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
That was Lisa, do I have a second?
Second.
That was, uh, Brian. Um, Mr. Manager, did you wanna?
Just to reiterate, um, what the document that will be attached to the ordinance that we are asking you to consider to adopt tonight is the document that removed the, the SSD projected revenue, revised the insurance premium revenue and reduced the salary expenditure and general government. Uh, it also is inclusive of the two aforementioned changes to the capital program, one being the, uh, the budgeting of remaining ARCA funds and the other being, uh, the inclusion of the downtown master plan as a capital project item.
Yeah. All right, uh, comments, questions up here?
I've got some.
Okay.
Um, so, a, a couple things, I think, again, um, as we, as I leave the city, I feel like the, the, the city continues as it was before to be in an excellent financial condition. I'm comfortable with this budget, Patrick, thank you for taking out, um, the funds in there from, you know, any potential SSA. Um, millage rate that may, may happen in the future. Um, I do think it's important, I think there has been some changes this year, I mean, if you go through and I've looked through the budget and specifically, um, audited financials since twenty seventeen and there's always a lot of noise in them because things always happen each year, that pandemic being one of them that affected a couple of years. Please, um, but, um, I think what you, what is clear is that the cost of running a, a government of our size continues to increase and will continue to increase. Um, I think we feel like we fired incredibly capable people to do a lot of different things that were different from what we were asking city, city staff to do six years ago, seven years ago, and they're doing an incredible job. Um, the cost of employing those folks is getting higher each year, we've each seen that how employee costs and business owners' businesses and others have gone up, the inflation and other things, and the city is not immune from that at all. Um, I think the other thing that we've got to be really careful of is that, or aware of is that, um, if you look at the funding for our, our public safety specifically, that's changed. Um, if you go back to twenty seventeen, it cost us about a million two to fund public safety. If you go to this year's budget, it's a million six oh seven. Um, that's a pretty significant increase of about twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent of that, but it's caught, kept up with the cost inflation. Um, on the flip side, the fines and forfeitures have gone down considerably. Um, at the highest point in twenty nineteen, we collected six hundred and thirty-six thousand, that means that city residents and businesses paid for five hundred and seventy-four thousand that year of good a cost to fund public safety. If you look at this year, and I am fully one thousand percent supportive of the change in policing policies that, that Chief has implemented. The communities, um, the, the, the community policing, we've seen no significant upticks in any criminal activity whatsoever. We have less fines though, as a result of, we aren't ticketing as many people that go through our city. That changes a lot of people's attitudes about what they feel like when they used to go through Avondale Estates, not too long ago. I think it's important, but what it does mean is that we are going to have to spend more dollars to fund public safety if we want to continue to employ public, public safety to the same extent that we are as of today. To give you an idea on this budget, the cost of public safety is a million six oh seven. The, the expected collected fines of forfeiture is two hundred and eighty thousand, which means it's a million three twenty-seven's gotta be paid out of the general fund for that. Um, that's seventeen percent, in the past, it's been as high as fifty-three percent of, of public safety's been funded through fines and forfeitures. I think it's important to continue to do it, but I also think if the city is going to stay on task with, as I've kind of got on my soapbox last time about, we need to be moving ten percent, in my opinion, of the general fund and two capital projects on average every year, it's gonna change a little bit every year, but on average over a three-year window, we should be putting ten percent of what we collect in the capital, because we have a hundred-year-old city, the problems that we have from an infrastructure standpoint don't go away, they get worse. We started to chip away at that and we're gonna continue to do that, but we need those funds to be able to do it. Um, so what does that mean? Um, it means that everyone, some of you are here tonight because of taxes, um, typically every June, we're at pretty full meetings because people here because of the millage rate comes out and taxes. And I think every year we've tried to roll back that tax as much as we possibly can, we tried to reduce that as much as we possibly can. Last year we did it, I think it cost us about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, is that about right, to do that? Um, you can't eat your cake, have your cake and eat it too. And that's what I'm saying, and it's easy for me to say because I wrote off the board, I don't have to make this decision next year. Um, but I do think that the board, because of this change, um, needs to consider not only not rolling back taxes, but probably looking at increasing the millage rate in a certain extent to compensate for this, public safety is one of the, it's one of the best services that we provide to our residents and citizens. Avondale's an incredibly safe place, it makes people want to do business here, it makes people feel safe when they live here. And I don't think there should be any changes to that, but I do think in the future, that the board will need to, need to consider raising the millage rate in order to pay for that, because again, um, it's about a three hundred and eighty-two thousand dollar deficit, what we use to collect from a cost standpoint, um, and it's, it's, it's meaningful, and that's the reason why this is the first year from a budget standpoint. It's been harder to say in a budget that we could transfer money from operating into general fund. That's the delta that is causing the majority of that, and it's something that I think, you know, we'll have to look at in the future. I also, last thing, and I know this is, um, I think at some point in time, the city should consider putting in a, uh, uh, either, whether it be an ordinance or resolution, that it is the goal, just like it was the goal when we first started to put twenty-five percent of our operating budget, make sure that it was available, uh, each year, um, in cash, that we set aside that over a three-year average that we're putting ten percent aside in a capital fund. Um, I think it's important for the future of the city and to maintain the fact that we're continuing to do capital projects. I'll be out of here before that can be decided, but I think it's important and should be considered so at some point in time in the future. But other than that, I'm completely fine with the budget and thank you guys for letting me for the conversation.
Well, thank you. All right, um, Dee, Lisa?
Um, I don't have any comments on the budget, I'm comfortable with the budget. I would just like to, uh, reconfirm, uh, Brian's suggestion about making sure that we push money into the CIP on a consistent basis, it's very, very easy to, uh, decide, hey, we're not gonna put in sidewalks, we're not gonna do sidewalk repair because our budget is tight or we want to roll back the millage, and those are the kinds of things that typically lose out year after year in a CIP program unless you have some way to consistently and continuously fund them. So I think Brian's point is very well taken and like him, I will not be here after the first of the year, but I, I, it, it is a concern of mine and I think he's come up with a very elegant solution and, um, hope that it's considered next year.
Thank you. Uh, I'm fine with the budget, I have no other comments, and, oh yeah, and Lyle?
No, I don't have any comment, I'm pretty good with it, thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh, seeing no other comments up here, do we have any comments, questions out there about this item? Hold on.
No.
Nope, okay. Seeing none, I'd like to bring back for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, is that five?
Yep, aye.
All right, thank you, Lyle. All right. Good deal. All right, so, item number seven, okay. We have a, we have before us a resolution by the Board of Mayor Commissioners of the City of Avondale Estates creating a special district to fund infrastructure improvements within the city's downtown business district to establish the boundaries of such special district and to provide for the levy and collection of taxes within said district. Do I have a motion to adopt?
I'm on it.
Uh, that's Lisa, do I have a second?
Second.
That's Brian. Um, okay. Um. I'm just gonna go ahead and start with comments. Um. I know a lot of you are here to comment on this and you will have your chance. Um, just want to say, I, I think this is a very good idea. Uh, I think that to create a district that, you know, needs love, as we like to say, but needs roads, sidewalks, stormwater, infrastructure improvement, uh, to levy a tax that will benefit only that district is logical. I mean, it's fair. I think it's fine. Um. And I think that, you know, for the ninety, close to a hundred years of this city's history, uh, whatever money was spent over there, whether it was enough or not enough, whatever money was spent in central business history was borne by the residents, probably ninety percent or better of that money. And one of the things we've been trying to do up here, if I may say, is to create a more balanced, um, you know, revenue stream so that there's a little less burden on the residents and yes, a little more on other revenue sources, including property taxes, I mean, uh, property tax in the business district. And it's really, it's not out of any spite or anything. It's just, you know, you want to have a more diverse revenue streams, a more balanced revenue stream so that when things like the two thousand eight mortgage meltdown happens, you're not suddenly in a fix because ninety percent of your revenue comes from houses. Um, and so I, I think that, you know, I don't think it's unfair. I mean, I think that the residents have been bearing a lot of everything for ninety years. So I think if you want to talk about equity, let's talk about that. But, um, one thing I do want to say though, however, is over the next eighteen months, we will be embarking on one of the greatest improvements the city may ever see, two seventy eight. We're going to take that street and try to turn it into something that's less South Cobb Drive and more Main Street. We're going to reduce lanes. We're going to build wider sidewalks on both sides. We're going to reduce curb cuts and turn it into something that I hope we're proud of, that's safer, that serves our businesses, that attracts people here. I think it's going to be a great project and I think it's going to be a, a big deal for us. I mean, we basically have one main street and that's it. Uh, now, that project is going to be disruptive and it's going to, it's going to slow some people down getting home from work, but it's going to be disruptive to businesses. And although we're doing it block by block, i- it's, it's going to impact people. There's no doubt, okay? And I don't think anyone can honestly say they know what that impact's going to be. It might be a lot. It might be a little. It might affect some businesses more than others. But it's going to be a stress, okay, on our CBD primarily as far as business goes. Again, you may be a little late home from work, but that's not a business thing. That's just a, you know, whatever. It's not a whatever. It's a big deal, but you know what I'm saying? Um, it doesn't affect your wallet if you're five minutes late getting home from work. Um, so for that reason, uh, in addition to high interest rates right now, we still have inflation. But I think primarily because of the dis- the, the unknown disruption that two seventy eight may cause. Uh, my personal feeling is that we shelved this idea for a year. Uh, we see how the two seventy eight construction, what it's doing, how it's affecting us. We talk about this again in a year. I just want to reiterate, I think the SSD is fair. I think it's a good idea. I just think that right now it's going to be a bit too much. That's my opinion. I'm one of five people and I just want to tell you guys, if four of you say, I don't agree with that, that's cool. Okay, but I just think that we need to shelve this one for a year because of two seventy eight and that is my opinion and it's worth the oxygen it took to produce it. So there, okay. Any other comments up here?
Who wants to go?
Um, I don't mind. Um, so I, I, I think we should, um, I, I, I think we should create the district. Um, I do want to say thank you to Chastity. Um, we spent about hour and a half on the phone, uh, two days ago. Um, and had a, a fantastic conversation. And, and while I don't disagree, um, with the potential impact of, uh, the, uh, two seventy eight. Um, I do, I do think that going ahead and creating it, um, there's not any, you know, until there's a, a millage rate that's provided to it during the, um, June timeframe when we get the millage rate, uh, it could be zero. I mean, it could be zero for years. It could never be used. It could be three mils one year, five mils the next, zero for the rest of the time. Um, so I don't, you know, I think the hard part of creating the district, um, is an important thing to go ahead and do. Um, I do think, and I, I know that as we've had conversations over the several weeks, um, I don't want to discount the impact that it will have to, um, potentially to businesses. Um, I'm a banker. I work with business owners every day. Um, I know that even for those that don't own their own buildings, uh, most of you are triple net leases and those passes are, uh, pass along to you. I think tonight we have some folks from, um, you know, from residences in the special service district and, you know, uh, that sucks. Um, I, I hate that too. Um, you know, I don't think it was, um, there's no way to not, if, 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 if we want to continue to put money towards this, um, there's no way that, you know, you can carve it out so that just is this business or that business or this property or that property or the other. Um, and so there is some impact to that and for that, you know, um, I'm sorry. Um. I, I do, um, but I do continue to think that it does a couple of things that I think is important for the city. Um, and it gives us an ability to continue to invest in that area at a higher rate than we had, we would have in the past to the future. Um, I think it, because, you know, I think Chastity had this conversation, it doesn't go into the general fund. Just like as, you know, your taxes for real estate goes into general fund. It could be used for general operating expenses. Um, it can't. It has to be used for specific projects in the special service district. It should have a direct impact on your roads, your streets, your stormwater, your sidewalks, all of those things. Uh, and I think that's, that's an important piece of it too. Um, but I would, I would, I'm in favor of setting it up. Um, I think in June, when you get the, the, the tax digest, which I think will again be higher. Um, as I said earlier, I don't think that we should look at rolling back the rate. Um, I also think that you may look at needing to increase the millage rate too. Um, but that those are decisions that can be made when you have information at that point. And that's kind of what I'm for, uh, as far as the special service district is.
If, if I may, just so everyone understands, this is kind of a two-parter. What we're here tonight to consider is creating the district. That's part one. And that just creates a district. The second part, if you will, is in June when we decide if there's a millage rate or if there's not, if it's zero, one, two, whatever. So it's, it's a two-part thing. We're not here to talk about millage rate. We're here to talk and we can, we can talk about it, but that's not what we're voting on or not. We're voting on just to create the district or not. Sorry, everyone's here. Sorry, just wanted.
Well, and I think that's another important piece is the reason why we've taken out the budget too. Um, you know, so we, we took that out of the budget, um, for that specific purpose of it, it wasn't a good thing. But, yeah.
Want me to go? Okay, so as, I mean, Brian, you've, you've kind of laid some of this out today. Um, we, we need a diverse tax base. We need downtown development. We need investment and infrastructure. Our downtown needs to be a resilient place, one that can handle economic ups and downs and where businesses and restaurants want to be, want to locate. I mean, businesses and residents want to locate. And I really think that the investments that we have made and are making, the things that we have in our capital plan, um, will pay off in the long run and, and get us there currently. We're in a time of transition. We're trying to improve downtown infrastructure on a limited budget. And yet, density and development while starting to improve has not, is still not funding enough of those improvements at this point. The special service district, the way I look at it, it's a tool. And we should use every single tool we can and have available to us to make progress. The URA is a tool. We use that. The DDA is a tool that cities can use. These things are legally available to us. Many, many cities use them for exactly the purpose that we are talking about tonight. Merely having the SSD help, helps us in the eyes of things like banks and people that might want to lend us money, by the way. Just having the SSD, forget the millage rate, just having the SSD. And I agree with Brian. It's a flexible tool. We don't have to assign any millage to it next year, given two seventy eight. Or we can haggle about what that perfect amount is. So it's something that changes every single year. It's easily adjusted. I like that about it. It's very flexible. Um, you know, I talked a lot about this last time that there really is a distinction here that we're talk, what we're talking about is a tax on property owners. I agree, some of it will be passed down to renters and the people that bear, I think the hardest part of this are business, small business owners that own property, that own the property where their businesses are and people who have residences in the downtown. I like Brian. I have the most sympathy for those residences. I agree, it's not perfect and nothing is perfect. You know, property owners though, all property owners will realize big gains from the investments in our downtown. Eventually, if and when you want to sell your property, you will make a sizable, you know, it, the profit on it. Um, so there's that. I think I talked about for businesses at the last meeting, I went over all the things that the city does and invest money and time in to help our businesses, which I think helps offset any SSD tax. I'm just going to name them again briefly. Low interest ro- loans and facade grants, rural op- and opportunity zone tax credits, marketing and promotions, quarterly business newsletter, events. These are all things the city, the city and or DDA are spending money on. Parking solutions like parking lots and a potential parking garage and just the fact that we're keeping parking free in Avondale. We're not charging for it. And the DDA and Main Street boards themselves, many downtowns in cities have to actually fund those or those, um, programs. They have to act, they are taxed to fund a DDA and Main Street. We don't have that. I just wanted to reiterate that we are trying to help our small businesses, not just trying to hurt them with an SSD. Um, just one last comment about the residences. Again, the, I do feel for them, as Brian said. But also, I also understand they will realize a profit and boy, there's a lot going on in our downtown to make it more livable, walkable. And there's a brand new park that's nearby for folks. So there are, in the meantime, also large benefits that are being realized. I think this is a tool we need in our toolkit. I think we can discuss millage in June. I think two seventy eight will have an impact and I'm certainly um, going to be cognizant of that when assigning any millage, if I do, if I decide to do any at all.
Okay, thank you. Dee?
So, yeah, um, you know, I have thought long and hard about this. I am very supportive of our downtown master plan and totally excited about the potential for our connected street grid to make our downtown more vital and, um, robust. And I think connecting our street grid in the downtown is going to help every piece of property in the downtown uh, be more viable and more vibrant. And all of that takes resources. And I do believe firmly that the city needs all opportunity to leverage resources that it has, can. You know, given any particular year, uh, other things are going on and that should be taken into consideration when the millage, millage rate is set. But I feel very strongly that the city needs as many tools as possible to implement the vision that we have for our downtown. And therefore I am going to be supporting the special tax district.
Lionel?
Yeah, um, give me one. All right, good. Um, yeah, so, uh, it, I, I, I can't support, uh, the special, uh, district. Um, and the bottom line for me is that I won't do anything that's going to hurt small businesses. Uh, what I see with, uh, something like this happening is that at some point in the future, where it, and it may be a, a close future, a near future, uh, we will see businesses, small businesses leave. Uh, it will be untenable for small businesses and what will have coming in are larger commodity, uh, type businesses, uh, national chains. Uh, to me, having beautiful streets, uh, having everything that's put into the downtown master plan is great. Let's do it. But I don't want, uh, I don't see, uh, the community as being populated by major chains because that's all who can, uh, those are the only businesses that can afford to be here. And there is also, there are also some deeper, uh, you know, questions about this, uh, for me. Uh, I don't know if anyone on the board today has ever owned a small business. Um, I know Brian, you said you worked with them. I've owned three small businesses. And I empathize with the small business owners. I know what it's like to not get a paycheck of my own because I gotta meet payroll. And amounts that may seem miniscule in the, in the grand scheme of things uh, have a large impact on the small businesses. And yes, uh, the DDA does a lot downtown. Uh, but one of the things that was not mentioned that the DDA does is, uh, provide abatements. So on the one hand, we're providing abatements uh, and decreasing our tax revenue. And on the other hand, we're saying that, uh, we need additional tax revenue. So, you know, there's a kind of a paradox there. You know, so this is, uh, something that I thought a lot about. I talked to business owners about it. You know, and I, I can't find a way, uh, to come to the conclusion that this would not hurt small businesses i- in our, uh, downtown. You know, and, you know, of everything that we are doing downtown. You know, I don't think there's anything more important than having, uh, the businesses down there. Yes, we need the infrastructure, uh, to support them. Absolutely. We do. But I think, uh, there are ways, uh, to generate revenue uh, that would not involve losing the small businesses, people who have invested. Uh, you know, some I talked to who invested, you know, just, you know, everything they had, they put into it, you know? And I understand business owners when they say they can't come to a meeting uh, because they have to be working at their business. Yeah, a lot of times, you know, picking up a shift at your business, uh, saves you money so that, you know, you can continue it, so that you can sustain the business. So it's not, uh, you know, it's not, you know, a matter of businesses will fail. Yeah, some businesses will fail, but I don't think that, uh, we need to have an, an active hand in choosing winners and losers. And I think that, uh, this is a way of indirectly, uh, affecting uh, the livelihood of, uh, the folks who have chosen to open their business down here. And I'd like to see more people open more small businesses down here. It, you know, it may not be as, uh, you know, as, uh, as shiny and, you know, spectacular as what we see in, you know, Alpharetta or, you know, other places that have, uh, you know, done, you know, great things, uh, you know, and realize their visions of what their downtowns look like. Uh, but I don't know that, you know, our vision is, uh, their vision, right? You know, so I can't, I can't support this and, you know, I can't, that, I can't, uh, support even creating the district. Because to me, I, I just, uh, think that if we're going to do such a thing, then let's do it. Let's put a miller trade on it and let's just, okay, this is what it's going to be. But, uh, splitting it in two and creating it and then leaving it dormant, I, I'm not seeing what that buys us. You know, it can, it can be done through a vote later, just as it can be done through a vote now. And, you know, who knows? Maybe something will come along that will make me say, you know what, uh, this makes a case for it. But I'm not seeing that case right now. And, you know, I, as the mayor said, you know, I'm one of fives, but you know, there are a few lines that I won't cross and one of them is, uh, doing something that, uh, in my view anyway, uh, hurts our small businesses.
Thank you Lionel. Um, okay, I'll go up here. Uh, anything else?
Uh, ju- just.
Uh, ju- just maybe a quick explanation for the board, just our factual clarification. Um, you know, when you're, when you're levying a millage, there is a state required process that you gotta go through. So that's why you can't do it right now. Um, it's because there is, uh, you know, several rounds of public hearings. That you have to hold, just as you would with a regular millage. Uh, uh, but unfortunately, the state requires also. To establish a, a district the year prior than you would make a levy. So that's why I've split it into. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, I'll get up there. Questions, comments up there. Yes, ma'am. If you could just name.
Katie, I live at one six seven Locust Street in the Locust Lofts. One of many different residents that are here tonight that live in the business district. Um, respectfully in Brian's words and SSD for us residents would suck. And that is because it would be an inequitable tax. So we've seen our property taxes increase over the last few years and then having the additional tax rate in the SSD on top of that would just. Be more insult to injury for us. We also feel that this tax is beneficial in uh, Linda's word, is it Linda or? Lisa, I apologize. Lisa's words to sellers. And we want you to consider what about the long-term residents that have no plan to sell anytime soon. We have many residents in our community that absolutely love our community at Locust Lofts and have no intention to leave anytime soon. This would greatly impact them because they don't have any kind of plans to flip or sell or rent anytime soon. Uh, we also want to be sympathetic to the many business owners that are our neighbors and know what impact that has on their small business. Uh, we do completely agree with all of you that the infrastructure does need to improve. But what we might want you to consider is that that tax should be shared across the entire city. As the entire city, not just the downtown district, not just the businesses and not just the residents of that district. Would immensely benefit from those infrastructure improvements. We also want to point out that there have been several infrastructure improvements, just based on observation to the south side of the neighborhood. We feel the north side of the neighborhood perhaps not, as you say, needs love, has seen quite so much attention. So we want you to consider that as well as you propose this SSD. So those are a few of the inequities we can see just in uh, initial consideration of this additional tax. And we want you to consider that. I know there are several other members in my community that have come here to speak too, so I'm gonna say thank you. And uh, yeah, if anyone else would like to speak, I know it'd be a good time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, hi, I'm Greg Knott. I'm over, also over at one six seven Locust Street. I'm the one that actually helped found the Locust Lofts. That's over there. Um, came here in two thousand, having just survived Y two K. And uh, so, you know, nothing was really figured out what to even do over there. We, we uh. We had our, brought our idea and, and they had no idea what to do with it, but we, but I just, I, I'm, I'm, I'm an architect. I'm also excited about what, what's going on here. Um, I have a little bit of a question about two seventy eight considering. You, you know, changing a major highway, it is two seventy eight into a one, you know, one lane in each direction when we're gonna have. I'm assuming in the future, Georgia Duck and Cordage is gonna be another increase in density in the area. Um, uh, also, uh, I think uh, as we do develop more, I think some of the developers. Should uh, be paying a little more share of their dues, have a little more skin in the game. Uh, I'm constantly running down by Trammell Crowe. Within a month, the sidewalk was crumbled in front of the New York Flippin Pizza. Has never been repaired. I just feel like developers, they have no skin in the game. They come in and. Build their thing and then leave and they, and, and so I think they should be paying also for. Some of the um, infrastructure improvements, because like when Trammell Crowe built all that. There was just, I mean, infrastructure of plumbing, sewer and all that stuff. Uh, that just adds to the infrastructure load and that's gonna happen as well when Georgia Duck and Cordage. Um, gets developed. Uh, I've been here for, like I said, twenty years before. Could just drive the streets willy-nilly. Now I'm driving down, we, cars parked on both sides of the road. Because there's not parking on the, on the, on our roads and so, I mean, and that infrastructure. And while I think that's part of the, the, i- if it's a parking garage or something. But I believe that we are all one city and that load should be handled. Um, by everyone in the city because they're all benefiting. I, I was just in Boston. And uh, went into the area where the dig was and just by making that a park. Between the two sides of that freeway, now that's just this free walking and it's just, it makes it such a nice. So I can see on one side what you mean by making two seventy eight this more walkable street and it's much more uh. Um, people can walk across it much easier than now and how that makes it, but that, even that. Makes it more reason to have the um, more residential side help pay for the infrastructure. Here because that's gonna be, they're gonna be able to enjoy this business district as much as the other side. Um, and then I liked uh, Lyle's idea of the um, small businesses. Small businesses are gonna have more skin in the game. We bring in, if, if, if only people that can afford this. Are the big chains, they have no skin in the game. It's just, they're just uh, have a little place in the thing. So I just think we're all one city and everybody should be. Enjoying the benefits of the city, but as well pay.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am. I'll come back. Yes, ma'am.
And Emmanuel, my husband owns a building twenty eight ninety five Washington and I'm not on the D, but I am a lawyer and he said I can speak for it. I have to say, I agree with that we're all one city. I don't even understand the argument. That the residential part of Avondale has been supporting the development in the area you're talking about. I mean, we pay property taxes. Everybody over there pays property taxes. We have always paid substantial property taxes. If you've mismanaged those matters. So you feel like there's been inequity there, it shouldn't be on the backs of people who have been fulfilling their legal obligations. As structured by the community for decades. I just think, I, I don't think that argument carries any weight. And I think it's, I think it's both deceptive and unfair.
What I meant was, all the money spent in this city ever, ninety percent of that revenue has come from residential property tax. It's just fact. Yeah. But I mean, I'm just saying, you know, but what we're trying to do as a city is just create. You know, a little bit more balanced situation because as I said in two thousand eight, we were in a serious bad situation because. Property taxes or property values dropped, they had increased the millage rate, I think it was like three, maybe. It was a lot, you know, to compensate. And, you know, uh, if we had a little more balanced, you know, economy, I guess you would say. We could have weathered that a little bit differently. I'm not casting aspersions on the ten percent anybody spends. I'm just saying it's a fact that. Ninety percent of everything that's been ever done in the city was borne by the residential property tax.
The allocation of property and ownership in the city. I mean, I wonder what percentage is held by residential owners on. Not in this district. I mean, this is a relatively small district. You would not expect it to carry a huge percentage for a much larger area.
Well, and I don't.
I mean.
And, and it doesn't. And, and there's not, even if there's a millage rate, if there is a millage rate of fifty put to the special service district. It would still be, if you look at the, if you look at the projects that are on the capital plan right now, about. I think it fourteen or fifteen million of that number would be projects specifically in the central, in the central business district. There's no way, there's no way, so residents would still have to pay part of that too, right? I mean, so it's not, it's not a. It's, it's, it's not a situation where I think the special service district takes, takes the burden of anybody in the city. From continuing to spend money in the central business district. What it does do is it increases it um, by some amount. Within the special service district, which you, like you said, is a smaller district.
But it seems to me that the underlying thing that it, I really don't feel is being appreciated. It's the one city piece of it. It's not as if improvements are made in the district you're talking about just for the people that live and work there. It's being done for the whole city. And it doesn't make sense to especially assess, to me, it doesn't not make sense and it is in fact not equitable. To expect that district to pay, although for, like for instance, the parks, really? I mean, but the people in the residential area aren't tremendously benefited by the park. Their property values aren't going up. But the S, SSD people should pay more for it because.
Well, they're not.
They're a little bit closer, like we can walk there in ten minutes instead of fifteen.
Okay, thanks for the comment. Uh, Brady?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Commissioner Lorette, Lorette, Lorette. Uh, for your comments about small business, appreciate that. Um, two thoughts that came to mind while y'all were talking. Um, just challenging the, the thinking that the only entities that benefit from the improvements are the businesses. If the improvements have the impact, the expected revenue impact on businesses as you're expecting. Um, you know, occupational taxes are tied to a business's revenue, right? That's how it is for us. We are, we are property tax. We are property owners, um, but we pay taxes based on our revenue. Um, and if the improvements are actually beneficial, then the city will benefit from that because revenue of the businesses will increase, right? And then the occupational taxes will then increase, but proven on the back end of that, I would say. Um. You know, the other thought is that, just a word of caution, I suppose, in Heim Lake. Where I'm a mayor-elect now, just crazy. Um, we began a road widening project. Very similar to the one that you're discussing on two seventy eight. It's now in its seventh year. It was originally slated to be an eighteen-month project. It's a quarter mile, so it's much smaller than the project that you're talking about. And we've had a hundred percent of our businesses impacted by that and many, many shuttered, nearly thirty percent. So I think to, don't dismiss the impact that that will have on businesses. It's certain that that's going to happen, so. Take that seriously, I suppose.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, other comments? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Judy Lebruto. I live at uh, twenty eight ninety four Washington, the Locust Lofts. And I just want to address where you think, your thinking of how we benefit from the park. In this proposed district, there are twenty-four residential homes, twenty-four. Only fourteen of them are owner occupied. Of the entire twenty-four, there is one child under the age of twenty-five. So who benefits from the park?
Wait a minute, let me, let me stop you right there. The park is a separate matter. The park is being.
The statement was made that this district is being carved out and that there were benefits to the residents and the businesses of the park.
I said that there were more, it was more wa- becoming more walkable, livable, and there's a park nearby, a new park. But no one is saying that, A, you guys are paying for all of the park. No one is saying that, we're saying that we want to invest in this district and you, and specifically. Your property value will see a benefit from all, the, all of the improvements that are made. And I, I mean, I will just say, I agree that, and I have defended over and over again that. The residents, you know, on the other side of two seventy eight should be investing in their downtown. I believe in that wholeheartedly and they are. But their property value isn't gonna see as much of an increase. From what's happening in the downtown here.
When you look at the fourteen owner occupied residents in this proposed district. The average time that they have lived there is close to the generational, that's the way. There's not any turnover at Locust Lofts. They're few and far between. Right? Started its twenty years and it's been here for nineteen. I mean, we have examples. There is. No true incentive for me to leave Avondale. All of our property values have gone up. We took a risk going into Locust Lofts. We're next to Public Works. And we're surrounded by Airbnb's and rentals. We now have a park where people line our streets with their cars. They block our driveways. The city wants the vendors to put stalls in front of our driveways. We can't get in and out. So there's a pro and con on both.
Sure.
But for us to be segregated, which is a word that Avondale needs to stay away from.
Your choice.
Is not fair and I would encourage this group to at least postpone this decision until next year. Until it can be further vetted out. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hey Vivins, uh, I am part of the Locust Lofts community, uh, um, sixteen plus years now. And um, I agree with what you said about it taking money to invest in infrastructure to build. And in years that I've been a resident, seeing lots of growth, uh, lots of progress. Um. But you also mentioned Lisa equity. I've also seen, as my miller's rate has gone up over the years. Two thousand and eleven states. I've seen a lot of improvement on one side, the primarily residential side. On the other side of East College. Not a whole lot. Even our beloved Public Works building is falling apart. They serve all of Avondale states. And while the SSD may be up to debate, up for debate in terms of whether it needs to be a thing or not. And we can't exclude the residents and it possibly hurt the business, small businesses. Let's look at Brookhaven. Let's look at um, the Belt Line. They have the same issues to, to deal with. They use a, an SSD parcel um, program. To be able to decipher which for businesses, which for residents. I ask that you consider that if you are going forward with this SSD. But I ask that you at least delay, give it a little bit more thought and talk to your community. Particularly the small businesses that make up this city, that have made this city great. Thank you.
I appreciate that and, yes, I would add that, you know, to another reason to. Take the year and soak it in and see what possible other options, but also effects two seventy eight. But thank you, appreciate the comment. Uh, anyone else? Okay, you, yeah.
My name is Martin Emmanuel, two eight nine five Washington Street. Uh, I bought a completely uh, kudzu-covered lot in nineteen ninety-two. Struck by Mr. Lorette's uh, using the term uh, small. I'm an artist and I taught for my regular paycheck. I'm tired from it. Still pursue my work, but I'm not in a true sense of business at this point in my life and in my career. And I really would like to maintain what I have built. Uh, and there are other people in the room who have put a lot of sweat equity into that area. That lot I bought was completely abandoned. It was owned by Charles Playa, who owned the body shop. There was a recycling operation on that lot where they uh. Were permitted to recycle electrical wire and strip the insulation off by burning it. So that's where Avondale was in nineteen ninety-two. I moved heaven and earth to build my studio there. I would like to keep it. The rate things are going, my taxes. Have gone up astronomically. Over the thirty years that I've been there, so more tax is not very attractive to me. Now, I may not fit the model because I'm not really a business, I have a business license, because I was required to have that. I would like to uh, retain ownership, I I did not buy that. When I made my argument to the commission in nineteen ninety two. I had to explain, not only was I not a developer, I didn't want that property for investment. I needed a studio. And I was uh, granted permission to do that. So I would like to continue along along that same path. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Amy Sherry with Little Cottage Brewery, um, I think by now you know where we are at, and we're. Against it simply because we're looking at it in terms of this needs more taxes. Um, I also understand from being a homeowner that things have to be paid for. Um, where the disconnect is, is that the G D A has. Provided funds for the businesses to succeed, but now it's like, oh, we've given this, them this, now let's take back because we're going to make them. Pay more money for all of these things, um, it would be one thing if. None of our other expenses increase, we could pay a little bit more in taxes, but the fact that. Last year, our property taxes, even though we are renters, we have the pass through, they went up sixty percent. Our general liability. Is going up, uh, about sixty percent. And I think Lionel. The common sense, because this is, aren't we going to be in this is in six months because. People aren't, sixty percent more people aren't coming in and buying our product, and I think. A lot of the small businesses in this area are in the same boat, so I thank you, Jonathan, for. Let's table this, let's give them a year to see where we are, that's awesome, thank you for considering that, thank you Lionel for knowing. What? We deal with the small businesses. So. Thank you for your consideration, I think it's. On one hand, a little bit easy to, like, you do have the decision to make for the entire city. Um, and when you don't. Are not invested like the small business owners are, it's it's easier to remove yourself from difficult decisions. Uh, I just ask that you try to put yourself in our positions to see. How we're looking at it, um, is there another way that you could raise? This two hundred and seventy five thousand dollars that I thank you for taking down the budget, but that's all that would bring in, honestly. At this point, how about a bake sale, and everybody could check it, um, but. Honestly, going forward, just to really look at it from our perspective. And if there was another way to. Bring in this potential income, let's shoot for that first, instead of. Just isolating this one small area so that this one small area of people are now going to be penalized, so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, one more comment, and then we're gonna go back up here.
Um, just, just briefly, I mean, I think there's, there's a million talking points, but um. You suggested tabling it, I think it's a great idea, I appreciate what you're saying, I appreciate Lionel saying that. I can tell you the only way that any of us out here are going to feel like this has been tabled, to be to not establish it this year. And Dee, I know you're leaving, and this will be one of the last things you do. But you have the opportunity to truly table it by voting no. And letting the people next year establish it. You have the choice of doing that. Jonathan and Lionel are on that team, and this is something significant that you can do. And I would just ask that you please show us all a respect here and truly table it by not establishing it. Thank you.
All right. Want to close comment, uh, just out of curiosity, are there any online? Okay. And like to bring it back for a vote, follow the favor, say aye. There's three, opposed. There's two. So the resolution passes. And thank you, I respect that. All right, um. The next item up for consideration, that's all.
Sorry.
That's all right, I'm telling you, that's. Okay, all right, item number eight, uh, was this a?
Yes, okay.
All right, item number eight, we have before us an ordinance by the City of Avondale Estates to amend chapter fourteen, article two. Of the City Code Regarding Occupation Tax Classification and Taxation. To classify occupations and levy occupation tax based on the North American Industry Classification System. And to repeal conflicting provisions, could someone close door? Uh, do you have a motion to adopt? Same as that, Lisa, do I have a second, second, Brian? Um, Mr. Manager?
Yes, uh, so as we discussed at the last meeting, we're trying to make the process for both applying for. And processing uh, applications for occupational tax easier. Um, we have, we currently um, use a system based on S I C codes. There's a ton of S I C codes, it's difficult for businesses to understand which classification they should go under. It's tough for us to understand which classification they should go under, uh, sometimes, so we are um. Revamping by using a different set of codes, the N A uh, uh, C S codes makes codes which are fewer in category. And easier to define, uh, the uh, the formulas. Uh, associated with those codes are very, very similar, uh, we do not anticipate any burden. Uh, any additional burden on occupational tax for the businesses, uh, and if. A business runs into a situation where there is some sort of undue burden because of, of, of. Uh, you know, a a formula that is vastly different from the previous formula, then. Uh, we'll have the administrative capability of waiving that uh, addition to make sure that that that. You know, there's no issue absorbing some sort of um, additional occupational tax costs that they weren't expecting.
Okay. Uh, first of all, I may have a mistake, this is first reading, so I apologize, Steven, what do I do?
I think it's fine, we just want to say.
Yeah, yeah, you're fine, okay. Okay, so I'm, I apologize, I was reading off the actual title of the document and not the agenda which said first read, that was my bad. So that is first read, we are not voting on that tonight, uh, let's see what's due. Um, yes, that was my bad, I just didn't catch that, um. Can sit vote, no, okay. Um, so that was first read, we will read that again at our next meeting. And we will vote on it then, again, my apologies, okay, so. All right, I don't remember not a public comment on anything we've discussed this evening. Yes, sir.
Uh, simple five thirty, Kevin, I'm concerned. Some changes about the overall health of the city. One of the huge advantages of Avondale Estates is that we've had people here who sink really deep roots. Generational families, businesses that are here for decades, and when I. Over and over in tax hearings this evening, hear about how the financial benefit of living here is selling your property and leaving. And so I think that you're discouraging people sinking deep roots and investing, because they take a financial hit for that. Really what you're encouraging is people to come in and churn. Buy it, sell it, take your money and go, buy it, sell it, and we hear constantly about how. We're gonna get so rich, when we leave not rich, but you know what I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, and we're gonna, we're gonna uh. Get this financial benefit by leaving, or by selling and buying another one, or selling, but it's a dis. It discourages sinking deep roots, it discourages staying, because you get your money when you leave. And I I think we talk about master plans and making the city healthy long term. Then why are we encouraging churn? That's just my comment on that, thank you.
And and I respect your comment, I one hundred percent disagree with it, and I'm pretty sure I've never said anything to that effect, but. Um, as a matter of fact, I brag about the fact that the only people that, well. You only sell a house now and then for two reasons, one, you got a job offer in Seattle, or you're moving down the street, I'm proud of that, so. I disagree with that, but that's your opinion and I respect.
And and Jonathan, I'd like to make another comment on that, I I think the infrastructure changes that we're talking about, uh. Increasing our sidewalks, increasing our walkability as a city, all add to that sense of community that does. Make uh, it important for people to stay and know their neighbors and be here for the long term, but I appreciate the comment, I think you. It is a good point, so thank you.
But those things take investment and money, those things take investment and money.
Uh, any other? Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to ask if I can speak about a topic that wasn't on your agenda, but it's a concern to neighbors of, you know, terrorists. About the proposed five story next to single family residence.
We are not talking about that tonight, either in the regular meeting or the work session, we will be talking about that in the. Maybe January?
Um, a couple of things, um. I think it's, it's important to understand the item that will be coming before the board in January or February. The item is not to consider a height exemption for a development. The item is to consider uh, amending the zoning code uh, to mirror. The bonus system that is allowed for on the opposite side of two seventy eight, so I do want to make that. Clarification in case anybody needs, needs that clarification, um. Two, that, that is independent. Of any planned development currently going on, we know about a planned development. On that side of of two seventy eight, uh, which is proposed for senior housing, um, however. Uh, that developer still has several items to consider before moving forward to. To zoning review, a full zoning review, which is. Annexing a piece of property that they purchased that currently lies within the county into the city, which you you guys know that they have applied for. Um, and then two, the consideration of whether or not they are going to um. Pursue purchase of additional property, which they would then have to petition to annex in the city as well, if they do that. Uh, then the uh, configuration of 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 their development will change. Um, we, so, I I say that as, from staff's perspective is, we don't even know what this project is going to look like yet. Uh, and and there are several. Scenarios that have to play out before the board can even consider uh, some next steps, so. Um, I anticipate um, that conversation beginning in either late January or early February, but that's, that's what we're looking at.
I'll just say one thing, as residents that are dramatically impacted, because. But I remember Matt is about less than ten feet from this proposed area where you might have five stories. Uh, we need to be part of that process. I mean, we need to be included. And we want an effort, maybe. Five stories has a big impact, you know, whether it's a specific proposal or a zoning change. We need to be included, because we were part of that zoning rewrite, and all of the summaries, which I went back to. Both Avondale residents and P residents spoke to the need to be sensitive to our neighborhood, and that's why the zoning is written the way it was. So we don't, we feel very strongly about that, and if you were in our shoes, I know you would protect your neighborhood's character. Just as strongly.
Yes, just a quick note on, so map out seven two two, Dale Rose, um, just a quick note on what Patrick had to say, I know that. Uh, we're talking specifically about a zoning exemption, not about specific development, but I I would ask. Or recognize that the way that the zoning uh, height exemption is awarded is specifically for senior affordable housing. Um, on the south side of college, so that is very specific, transparently, it looks like. Even though you're saying it's not for a specific development, that it is for a specific development, so I think that's part of the concern. He has that, we're setting a precedent here by altering zoning code. For a specific developer, um, without actually saying that we're doing that, and it's, I'm just worried about like what precedent that sets for the rest of.
I thought it said, I thought it was for senior housing, not senior affordable housing.
Senior affordable housing.
Senior house, it was senior house, any senior housing, it was not senior affordable, I remember that.
John?
Is there money?
It's a million dollars in the next two years.
We just, we're not doing it every year as we've done previously, we're trying to. Gang it up to get more bank for our buck, but it's, the money's going in essentially every year, it's just not getting paid every year. Okay, well, it's just, if you pave a mile a year, that's going to cost tax, if you pile, if you pave. Four miles every four years, you get even more, you can pave like six or eight, you know, it's just, so anyway, uh, any online?
No.
Okay, any, any others out there? All right, seeing none, I'd like to bring it back, um, do I have a motion to adjourn? Is Dee, do I have a second?
Second.
At least I'll say aye, aye.